Back and lean against the wall, but I think it'd be very hard.
And she hung up on the other one.
Very aggressive back time. I thought, I thought right when I was about to hit him. Look, I'm not there. I think he may have answered. I thought, well, he's probably just not busy or something. Yeah, we're about to take our.
Was he right?
Yeah, I had to tell you there. Look, we can do that. Yeah. I don't know. This is it.
That's my whole life.
I'm off this one. It's like, they bunch of hard hands back here. I knew it was raining, and I looked out. It was straight by Tuesday at half.
But you're still.
I thought if I get washed over here, I don't think I'd go far. I thought Jamie, Jamie Vincent might come out in the dressing room. Well, well. And I tell you what, water's scary, isn't it? It was running fast, too. What happens to the money? And finally decided to quit running. How quick? This is about, you know, if it's. Yeah, that's. If it happened in dry. If it had been gone for a month, months, yeah.
I just texted him and asked if he was coming.
I love it. The top part of all, you know, the dry water in your yard. And I could tell by looking at this water, it's probably in the way. I hope this is my right. I just got one more just. Can you handle that away?
That's weird.
This guy, I don't know how you find it. I think it was your. No, man, it's not. It's not. When I'm out there, you know, it's that power plant, so.
She will, whether she's only gender nine. So, lady, you shall not dance me.
Nikki.
Marker?
Yes. She messaged me first.
Now, somebody has asked me who reached out.
I've been doing that, but I don't. But I'll sit right here. I say it. I'm good. That's my one thing. I'm sorry. I'm sick. I got your back. I'm good.
This is my boss.
I see her.
Marshall Pears.
That's her.
There's more with that thing, I don't know. Like eight hole.
I can't speak now, so I have the layers.
Your car? I'm a little bit immune. See, I got hot cars, drive kids. I really hate, I hold it so close, I hate having them go off there. And then again, it's hot.
They do. Also, the work session is in the middle of the month typically. And did many of them first and third Monday. But because of the holiday, they put them in one last night.
Yeah.
No. Not yet. Um.
I was curious.
Yeah. Yeah.
And pussy cat. I can make a picture, right? I love that. That's my whiskey, they got.
That's some brand beer. It's sort of neat. It comes in small packets. It's what my brand beer is.
Ladies and gentlemen, the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear and beloved citizens of this land, to everybody here, thank you for our families that represent. Let me be with us as we do our season business, forgive some new sins, and wash an act. Okay, the first thing I'm agenda approved, the special meeting of the bench, council meeting. You like that thing two thousand twenty-four, the council meeting. August five, two thousand twenty-four. Got your motion for that?
I'm in.
Just got your motion second.
I see.
Second, third.
Uh-huh.
You follow. Next one is something we do every year is approve resolution two oh two four, that's four oh five. Severe weather preparedness sales tax holiday, which is February twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five, or February twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five. I have a motion for that, please. I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four, that's severe weather. Pretty much motion second.
I see.
Second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
You follow those two. Uh, the next one is for I don't have any to attend the deep shot perp explosion in Lexington, Mississippi for October fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventh, eighth, twenty-four. That's what we do every year.
What's the cost of that?
I don't have that. It's just the cost of three nights hotel and and probably the bills, some of the bills are paid for, you know, but not all of it. Two hundred dollars a night to the money.
It's not the actual cost. I have an actual cost for that, and so we can be later if you want that.
I'm gonna propose to you to put my. Pretty much motion for that second.
I see.
Second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
You follow those two. Next was also for a trip to approve for Craig Knight to attend training classes for police chiefs in Montgomery. October one through four, three nights.
Same thing costs with that one. I don't have that one, but.
I have a motion on that.
I'm in.
Next, much motion second.
I see.
Second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
You follow those two. Uh, Alicia, I'll call them you nine.
Yeah, I'm here.
Alicia.
What are we gonna do with the clothes? We need to contract somebody else to do this and clean the floors. Yes, the water closed. Yes, because of torrential downpour. I know we can't stop God from doing what God's gonna do. But you know that I've been here since June twenty twenty. I mean, January twenty twenty. Every, every time, ask him, see council to do something. Yes, I know you contacted the core engineers. That, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate you sending me the paperwork and the emails, talking to the emails, the correspondence. I know you've contacted Adderhold, and you told me last week, uh, you contacted Kate Gritt, or she contacted you. Um, I mean, enough's enough. We contract for everything else in this city out. Why can't we contract to have somebody clean some of this up? Because people.
I guess out of the cities, not out of their hands, out of their, uh, the expense of it. Uh, we've been working with coal for since twenty, since two thousand twenty, so this is two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, four and a half years.
And now we're on their list to be funded, and I think the funding was three, four hundred thousand dollars just to do the study. So we cannot afford, the city cannot afford it, and we don't have the equipment, and we don't have the manpower. So.
Well, I, I, I have no doubt that city and the law being overly, or, you know, taking away from the employees we got, but I know that they are not trained to handle that. You know, and I know that we don't have the equipment, but something's gotta be done. I mean, I mentioned to you.
Well, it's actually depend on the coal. Now, Denise has been, uh, I've, I've, I've lived over there since nineteen sixty-five. And this happens about every eight or ten years.
Over there, over at there.
And Denise is just out of the same way. The water.
We might live over there, that's all. Wait, every ten years?
Every eight, ten years.
Well, it was estrogen, sometimes toil, sometimes, and we, we get it in the house sometimes, not all the time.
Where are we talking? Living there?
No, at the corner of Ballard and.
Yeah, yeah, Mark Street.
Mark Street and Ballard. Little brick house.
Where you used to live, where you grew up?
Yeah, that's where she was.
I'm not from.
Oh, you said that's fine. You know, it would get, it would have to be nearly as bad as what we just had, and it would be all the way up to our porch. I mean, we've got like, I mean, we were on the floor all the time. But they finally did whatever they did there, and I don't understand it.
Well, they cleaned out, they cleaned out Pro Creek from thirty-three to the water treatment plant.
Yeah, but this had to do with that flume or whatever they put under the you know, they took a payment yard with it, you know what I mean? Yeah, oh, yeah, that was before you, that was probably before.
So there's not anything the city can do for any of this flooding that's going on? And then, and then I'm.
What I'm saying, I, I was, I'm sorry.
But I mentioned to you too about a month ago about Adam, Adam. Adam helped Athens just three months ago or something, with their project.
Can I ask, what is the cor- uh, core of engineers, engineers? What are they doing? Help me out. What are they doing? I'm going to be contacting you. What are they actually doing now?
They just put us on their, on the list.
On the list, like to, to share about funding for this project.
But we have, we have events.
So when, when would that, when did that happen to be on the list?
I don't know when it's gonna happen, sometime.
We're already, we're already on the list?
They're federal, she's federal.
I know, but we already on the list.
Yeah, we, we had additional ones.
Oh, the market.
Yeah, I think.
So we're already on the list?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so as far as being an engineer, since the core of engineers are on it, that they're doing, have to let us go ahead and look at it to get engineers?
That's their job.
That's what they've done, they've done it.
Because it's all.
I know, I, listen, I know core of engineers are, I'm just asking. By them being involved, that means we can't do that as a city to do some kind of, uh, uh, evaluation or look at the price. I'm just asking. Adam gave Athens a grant to fix that, or to work on it, or they got a complaint to fix. That was on the news very long ago. Can the city apply for any grants with Adam?
I mean, I'm all like, I didn't ask.
Well, I, you know, I mentioned that a few months.
Let me add something instead of calling and asking. Excuse me. Can you do a professional letter to the explaining the needs of the city in that to area? And you can have that as documents. This phone call is fine. But I'm not sure, I'm not sure where the documentation is going. When you make these calls and they say, well, la la la. So to me, as a city, as, as a city, as a business, to me, there should always be a letter to whoever putting in what the city wants, you know, how they can help, uh, even the core of engineers. But it's for, you said, twenty twenty. How do we like to see where we are on that list? Are we still on it? Have you talked to ladies, see if we still on the list?
We got.
I would.
We got a letter, or, you know.
I would be able, I would be able to contact and find out. You're talking about a letter, there was a letter sent to core engineers.
From us. From us.
From ready.
From you, okay.
She did.
Okay.
And, uh, I've given Malaysia a few more asks, but I think I'd rather do it to Brent.
Some copy of this.
I'll get you one. And it was all the documentation of their answers to our question.
And that was immediately?
It was since twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty?
The first letter was sent in twenty twenty. That's when we got their attention, and that's when I started hitting.
Okay.
And there's probably, I don't know, two or three emails, second forward, and uh, and then there was a telephone call, a Zoom call. It, I would mention that it was myself and Daniel, and I walked up. And there were probably uh, three or four core engineers, hello, and, uh, good, uh, good luck. And what's on the range, something, uh, making life a bar, always. The river and, uh, Nancy, that could be natural drainage in this city.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to educate myself. So with the core of engineers being involved, does that mean the city cannot apply to loans? Or you just leave everything to core engineers?
None of the knowledge I've got is core engineers are knowledgeable about the natural drainage of the whole country.
Okay, when they had that water issue on Ballard Road, and they came in this morning, I don't think, from what I can tell, the flooding would always come across the streets to us when it had a real bad rain. And that was fixed. Uh, and it kind of came around the same time as, uh, the sidewalks were in the process. So did that not come through a grant?
Sidewalk was.
Uh-huh, so what I'm asking was the, the work that they did to work on the drainage, was that approved in the, in the Ballard Road grant? Or was it something that was added, some kind of a way? Was it called?
No, I don't think it.
I, I think it was either. So I'm trying to figure out how, where that money came from? I mean, let me finish. I'm so sorry. Okay. Uh, I'm wondering how we got that grant? And what can we do to get another grant to help this place out? But my, my issue, my concern is that we're running around a lot on core engineers. I'm not sure how often you call them. When was the last time a Zoom happened? Was it like last year, or was it two years ago? When the Zoom, that's the last thing y'all had was Zoom, right?
The Zoom was in more than four. Same, you, I, I, we had a meeting that period and that. Where EMA was asking us for permission to put a weather south of the town, water tower. And Chubbles office had a representative here, and, um, Adderhold, and I think they had written, I don't know, she didn't know here. We had several people here that day. Of course, I would like to hear about that specific thing. But based on some of our concerns in that district about the flooding. Have you, I mean, I've been told, I've been here all the time, and I've busted and argued for years, and I've always been told, core engineers responsible for that. And that we have to do engineering, or if, and several times over years, different layers have made calls, and done whatever, but it just, it rears its head once every ten, fourteen years. And I don't know that I've ever, as long as I've lived here, I bet you there's never been a time where it rained ten to fifteen inches in twenty-four hours. I mean, it just kept raining. And so I knew it was gonna be bad, and I, I looked, tried to look out all night, but I finally, this guy sent us his line. But anyways, uh, that, after that meeting, I, the mayor, I don't know if you remember, but we've talked more about that. And I said, since we know some of these people, and they left us their cars, you know, Chubbles assisted, Teddy Gritt, and whatever. And we emailed, sent them all the letter, saying that this problem continues, and it might, might happen again for ten more years. But when it does, we don't know how to control the flood. And, uh, and I think the mayor just started some more emails after that, and he's reported that to me every time I think he's gotten up.
Okay, I just, another thing, why do we not get those? I know you're the president.
Oh, no.
I'm just, what I'm just saying, I'm, I'm wondering why, I, but that's why I'm on it. But I don't get privileged, you know, same emails. Now, you said something about you talked to Kathy, uh, I think recently?
Here was something I get Brent asked for, because it was in his.
Yeah, I hate something like this, but I understand them, but I'm up here.
Malaysia was asking Brent and.
I'm up here to vote. Right. That includes your district and mine.
And yours.
So when it comes to something as severe as this, I don't think I should have to ask. We can talk about things that's since twenty twenty, so it'll help me be educated when she comes in here to know. There's certain things that are in my district or not, I think I should be privileged. So, and that's, that's something we've been talking about for years.
But I want to add, I mean, yes, it's our basement, but yeah, it's hard. Those people that live on the south side of Joe Wheeler, they got a really decent in their yard. Their whole entire house was underwater. That guy took my phone and did a wild feed. How are they gonna sell the house? They've got a little kid. I mean, they're a little young family. It's not just the, the ropers. It's for this whole city.
Well, there's several.
They, they home goes down, go ahead, Jen.
I didn't raise that much, I mean, there's, you can, I already know, before it stopped raining, places in town like the Hana Hospital, and and there's several, now, this is probably as bad or worse or more widespread in my district coming out, our district coming out that way. But I mean, it, it's just a problem, you know?
Well, there's a problem with when it rained on Ballard Road. Like when it rained, the whole street, that go, when you leave Ballard, you go out to that power system, it was like floods. Floods. So my question is, the money for Ballard Road, was it core of engineers who said we, we do that? Or was a grant the city applied for to do that? I'm just trying, I, I don't remember, so I was not getting some information. It was, it was email.
Who come up with the information?
Okay.
What's she trying to say?
The grant.
Who, who, who? Was it core engineers that said, hey, do this, or?
I think it was.
It was the city.
That's community, and that's kind of based on, a lot of times on what I was feeling, on poverty level in the norm. Yeah.
Yeah. We had to do several.
Right. But I, I don't know if it's a poverty area that would fall on the CBG grant. I have no idea.
I think. And sidewalk, white guy. Yeah, and, and see, I, I think I remember, and I wish some of the, I'm straight before I was here, but I think I remember, we knew the same with that area, that part of that Ballard Road got underwater, every time the water were out there working, I think they
They did.
Somebody asked them, were they going down to one fifty-seven?
They did, they did, they went.
Those ditches better than the bank water.
They did.
Get out, so I mean, that was an easier fix, and this, this is gonna be.
Well, I mean, it might be enormous, but I'm, because I've experienced it on a small level.
It's on a high level.
Uh.
Well, I'm being honest with you, I, I, like the other day, and I'm, I don't know about as much about engineers. Nope, I guess Kit, Kit probably doesn't know about it nothing, but, uh, but I had a friend of mine who's an engineer, because I've been worried about it all weekend long, and he said, look, as much as it ran, he said, in his opinion, those ditches could have been completely, not had a stick of grass in them. But it was just too, it was still flooded, just like it did. And, and I, and I didn't really believe him, and I still don't know if that's right, but when I got it the next morning, thinking my yard would still be underwater, and it was just gone.
Oh, I understand that completely.
I know, I know.
But you know, I've talked to you, I've talked till I'm in the face. I am to the point where I'm gonna start contacting Adam. I'm gonna contact these representatives. Because everyone y'all sitting up there has said, Mark, you said, you've been on this board for however long. You've lived in this, I mean, I don't, I guess all y'all lived in this county, but forever. But y'all know it's a problem. Why do we just keep letting it go? I mean, why not try to get ADM grants or extra grants, even to do a little spot?
You're welcome to contact anybody.
Oh, I know.
It's just, it's, it's a problem too big for us to solve without expert help.
But it's just passing the buck. I mean, how long have you been on the board?
Four, forty years.
Thank you. My point exactly.
Yeah, I, I've lived in that district.
Right, right, right.
Except when I was in school, and every time, which luckily, probably my whole life, there haven't been four rains.
But that's a long time, though.
But every time that.
Many years.
Yeah, but every time that happens, it was.
Excluding this weekend.
Right, it's weird.
I have been trying to get this handled, the Crow branch cleaned out, because Crow branch is in my backyard. I mean, we have minnows now, but, I mean, you know, from this weekend.
Let me ask you, when it comes to ADM, and I understand the core of, I'm not just, you all keep telling me that I'm afraid of core engineers, so I know we're getting that. So we just say, make sure I'm clear, just because they've been contacted, we can't try anything like contacting ADM or we, we can't do any of that as a city? So it has, the ADM, I mean, core, all of that, or we can't do anything, uh, ourselves outside of contacting? I think, I, you know, what you're saying, and I think you probably could, but as far as them coming in with the skill set and the equipment and the money. But I, I still think, you know, I'm just saying, but to me, effort means a lot. And it might help this community out to know that efforts being made other than what's continually being done. Because what they feel like, what I'm hearing, is that the buck's being passed. So if they send, they need to call ADM, I don't know why we can't, why you can't. And then give it up, you send them a, a email, a, a letter, and they'll respond to the letter. So that's documentation we can share with them to say, we contacted ADM, and they said, whatever.
Oh, that's good.
Okay, let me ask you, when, when do you plan on doing it, when?
This week, I just said this week.
Okay. And, okay, it's good. Oh, oh. So can you give me a copy of that letter?
I sure will.
Thank you. All right. And do mention in the letter, I'm sure, that we historically contacted the core of engineers.
I hope, I hope you do. I see.
I was almost positive when this happened in the past historically, and I hope that there should be a folder in City Hall somewhere about all what efforts there, because there've been other times that there were efforts to get, to do this. One time, we had to get permission, I think, from the core of engineer to even put a piece of equipment in those drains, because they got to prove them all. And there was one time that we got the cannon and used what we put, they had, we had, and cleaned about some. But even after we did, a, a, a big rank came, it was like, almost like you did one bit of it.
After this rain, after I saw the news, I said, we got that yesterday, and I forgot what was going on in the port. And you notice it's about twelve hours later, started getting all that. All of this water went back. This problem's a lot bigger than most.
Yeah, it needs to get cleaned out all.
Yeah, and I hope.
It's gonna take a state level to come in.
They won't just look at this, they look at her cause, and that's what we would not know how to do.
Yeah, because I don't want to dump all our friends and family in Portland. They got all of our stuff, plus everything that failed.
Well, wait, this is what I'm struggling with.
It's a lot bigger problem.
This is what I'm struggling with. The, the Corps of Engineers of Will Bay made this request. So do they have a list of one, two, three, four? Where they can say where the city of Monty is? You know, to give an idea where we are on this five hundred, that's an exact version, right? But, and they can probably give an estimate of maybe, you know, happened in two thousand and twenty-five. I, I know, I'm, I'm personally, I don't like them to come here every time the same thing. And we're telling them, saying they don't want to do it. I think the narrative needs to change to collect the update. And I don't know if we're yet.
I mean, I, I, did you tell you Rick sent somebody or she sent somebody from her office not long ago, right? I think she left this. Yeah, a lot of ladies in Houston came over, or her associates came over.
And that was just a couple of weeks ago.
She came over, uh, twice, a couple of times. So what is she saying? In the last few months, right?
What is she saying?
That she's the one that said, we're working on, we're bad. Um, she contacted the Corps of Engineers.
And they say what now? Yes, she's saying what now?
She wouldn't look. We wouldn't show her, I wouldn't show her. The ditch, probably everything. And, uh, I feel real confident because of, with the Adderhold behind it, with Katie Britt behind it. Uh, I haven't talked to Dale Strong, uh, I'll call, contact him. Maybe later on.
You know, we're politicians out here. I like to work in the sense of time, but I said, only in, I believe, I was a employee, so I'm not working child welfare. Bridge jobs, who for mine? We always work in time and I, I cover this all the time. I sometimes, I don't, I don't understand why we don't talk about time. To give people in their communities an idea of may not work, may not happen. It was like when we talked to Kathy, women's issues, you know, and whoever, and, and they came out here. But they have a sense of when things may begin or end. You know, they are big time politicians, they have power that I would never have. So I'll be able to tell anything about when and if.
I don't think they have it, but, uh, I don't know, we don't have a close time.
So would you ask?
Oh, no, I didn't. I'm just, I just appreciate you coming.
I appreciate you coming, I wouldn't. And I think it's always good to ask for me. Can you tell me, Ms. Kathy, when you think this might be happening? Do you have an idea when you may be coming? Do you have an idea when this might start? Just to leave, it just kind of opened my chat, why you got their attention?
Well, when they actually know, when they say we won't have it in the twenty twenty-five budget, that was, I got.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't have to tell me something.
And I don't know, I don't know if they, that mean they won't have, I mean, it's a third one in twenty twenty-five. That's one thing too.
Are you putting it right?
I understood it was gonna be in the twenty-five budget and the safety was gonna be funded.
There's no way.
I, I, yes, I got them right, and I'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all really, we know, and we're dealing with that. Yeah, and I'm about to say that. I have to have the deal as the city council, most of the very few times that we had over the years had to deal with that, but I remember one in particular where it was a big project that involved the forest, involved recreation, you know, with the basement. Not going out that way that we thought was gonna be the biggest thing that's ever happened. And the wrong president got elected, you know, politics. And all of a sudden, that project was not reported to anybody that was in Washington for that. And it just, I mean, it'd been working on that for years and they said, we're sorry, it's not gonna be fun, you know, so.
And, and that happens all the time.
I know, that's what I'm just saying.
That's the thing we have with Valero and, uh, your district, with that sidewalk.
I'm just saying, that's the reason you can't hardly put it, I mean, that's totally.
But, but, but to me, ask.
And that's one thing, for me, I've, I've seen it now.
But, but to ask, I, I'm hearing, we never ask. You know, I, I'm just of the mindset and my professional training is, let me tell you, it was to ask, so I'm, I'm thirty with this.
Well, I would suggest that if y'all, I know y'all obviously have good reasons for the frustrated and aggravated and whatever words you wanna use. Uh, but I have found over the years that politicians who are there watching it around here, constituents, I say complaints from the squick people gets the grease, so to speak, or something. And that's the reason I've kind of told the mayor a few months ago, now that we've officially met some of these people face to face, might be a good time to start emailing them.
We need to make that wheels quick tomorrow.
I, I've been squeaking since January twenty twenty.
But if this comes, if this comes to me.
Obviously, what, what you're getting at is the general public.
I know.
Is don't see no answers. All they see is y'all are talking about a splash pad instead of worrying about our flooding. Who, who cares about a splash pad, let's get the flood off.
I, I've been around four, we've got the tension.
Yeah, what do you see?
I think, I bet you when they do this study, if they do, up to date, I bet you it's gonna get me millions of dollars. And I bet you, like, somebody said earlier, they'll have to, they'll have to worry about.
I don't sure, it's about two.
They're gonna worry about where the water goes if we do get it out of the water. Cause I mean, one time we were first about the size of.
A flow away?
Yeah, I don't know. We were talking about the size of the drain thing under twenty-four, and, and some engineer at that time told us, well, if you put a bigger drain in there and it might get the water off y'all just a little bit quicker. But he, he told me that, that reminds me, safely, you know, it floated, but once the rain stopped, it, it moved pretty quick and got out. He said, you know, if y'all work, if we put a gigantic drain, y'all are still gonna get flooded when the rain is that much. But it's gonna, it might get away from you earlier, but it's gonna go outside of town and get some big farm.
But it was helped for all the other times that you don't have this arrangement, that would happen, that's the point. Everybody understands, I think, when you get that much rain, it's within a twenty-four hour period, things are gonna flood regardless. But something needs to happen for the everyday rain that we hear.
You can't dump water on someone, I mean, you know, how if I can't dump water on?
I understand that, I understand that.
And same way here, we, we can't dump.
It's above, it's above all of our hands.
Someone who understands that concept needs to be tired and, you know, can I make a suggestion? Badly, can, can I make a suggestion that we keep this at the forefront of the paper? That we talk about this maybe.
Get up there every month?
Every month. Because I think it needs to be in the papers where, I think if they hear about it in the paper, then they're gonna feel more confidence in that we're doing, we need to be doing. And the last time in the paper, I don't know when. And you all probably had to come today, it would be in the paper today.
Oh, I've had to, I've seen, every day.
Um, so the next meeting for us will be.
First Monday.
What's, what's the date on that?
October the seventh.
October the seventh? So I'm, I'm, I guess I want to make a motion, that's what I think is that motion, resolution?
You can't make a motion on something that's not on the agenda.
Oh, well, let's go back to it, thank you. Let's go to the agenda next time on October sixth and I make a motion, October seventh, and I make a motion.
Well, yeah, but when we're talking, there's no reason why you can't, that was, I just can't say, we need this.
Well, I, I just want to make sure it's kind of the forefront of the people charging, see? Not them.
I know, I'm saying, I'm glad they do, but yeah, it's, and I was just suggesting, if you hadn't already, you know, supposedly all, well, I mean, there's a website where you get congressmen, you know, email address and everything else and they might not read it, but they got it from their office. So if y'all haven't contacted them.
Yeah, if you're ready to do that, why?
With Rogers. I don't know, and that's one thing, and, and I know Roger, I know the mayor, that's one thing, I'm kind of like the same in the way, there's a lot of times I get aggravated because I think Roger's not working on something. Until when I finally figured out, he's been working on it, he's just hadn't felt the need, you know, necessarily.
Because, you know, to me, to me, if that's the issue with City of Monty, I don't like being informed from the mayor on a regular basis. So I'm sitting at home just wondering about, well, have we done this? Have we done this? We've been brought a thousand times, I don't, I don't appreciate being left out of stuff. But before we leave, I, I want to ask some questions before we leave. Uh, when the attorney to Jerome came and talked to us about there'd be a specific time that he would identify by meeting with us? So have you talked, have you heard that from him, man, Roger? Phil coming down, we're, hey, now this is what I'm, I thought he was gonna give us a date. But if it comes this time, he wants to. When can, when can, you know, uh, when can schedule that, so you tell me when? Or can you call him to see what data he's had available and then let us know? Or you come to a meeting or? I want him to come and talk to me about what he said, prioritizing, uh, around the, uh, the, the houses that need to be torn down. So on property, I want, I want him to come and talk to me about what he said and talk to me about, that's what I want. So you can meet with him and let him review it that if he did it to us. Actually, um, talking to him. Something else that I have is, we had talked about, to see, uh, around the, uh, trailer, uh, stem cell and trans down there. And I know that her, she had got an attorney. So I wanted, I wanted to see how that was. Have we, we had to stop because she got an attorney? It can't be talked about anymore? I think she said she's gonna get her attorney.
Mr. Compton has talked to her attorney? Uh, the, right, the wrong, wrong, the, the sales tax people. I don't think, yeah, have contacted her.
Contacted the listed lady?
He's been paying the sales tax. And that's the last time.
So she had, had not been contacted?
She does, I don't know that.
Okay, okay, I don't have any name, that's what I'm sure. Okay, well then, we're ready now. I just want to make sure where we are relating in, uh, which is the context. Badly anything.
You're out here motioning.
Well, I, I got one more. I didn't know that we was done with drainage. I would just go say one more time. And this is not about the big drainage, but this is something just that I noticed, and I realize it's probably because it hasn't rained a long, long time. But there was so much debris that washed on the drains and stuff, a lot of it, that caused what I would call minor flooding. It made water go over the street was because the, well, the thingamajigs, the drus, the grates were covered up. Cause in front of Terry Littler's office, it was a top to a, a something and a bunch of, and I got out because I thought I was all that and was cleaning that out and I sucked my arm down the drain.
You know, East Street, East Street, they had a garbage team stuck in the road.
And, and I think that was waiting for a lot of places and I did notice, and I'm sure it was Daniel and them that went and cleaned those out that caused that to.
Well, I'm gonna ask, is that something that Daniel, this true does on a regular basis, is, is like that?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I would, that's why I'm in a way, but of course, it just happened to happen on a Saturday morning, you know, when our people aren't going to work, they work five days a week normally. Uh, but I, I think, and I think Daniel would do it because I called him once and he'd already been out once just trying to see. And, and he said he was gonna come back to town and see if there were some tricky drainage things that they might can clear out. But I think we ought to have a meeting, I think the mayor or somebody ought to meet to make sure that they know, will, anytime, cause that,
That's the time it rained like that.
That flood was sort of predicted, I, you know, I'm, I'm used to, they did think being wrong about the weather, so anytime. But they talked about that flood for several days.
You can watch the radar and not be a major.
Exactly, cause it was just coming and it was going over the same place in below it. So I, I would like to think, and, and I think Daniel probably already has, cause I've talked to him, but I would, you know, I think they ought to know, we'll pay overtime for a lot of things. Anytime we have, anytime of natural disaster, I know the last time we had that microverse, when one of our employees were out trying to help people or whatever, whether it be policeman or fireman or, or street department or whatever. And I, I felt a little bit bad because we didn't have more, I wanted to figure, did they any good? I mean, I could have done, just, but if we had more of our people out, like somebody missed them one of the emails or something, having signs saying water over the street. Yeah, and, and you know, I think we got some of those signs, cause I've seen.
Or even the orange.
Riding around, riding around, there was another.
No, no, cause I went, I went out pretty early.
And I think they did put some out and those got washed away because they would be down the, you know, down the way or something.
So what I'm hearing is that a part of their job description would be, when it rains like that, that they would get out and check on those.
Or in the event of natural, whatever.
But that would come from Roger to give that permission, right, to give it overtime? I'm asking.
I would think they would know that, and I didn't ask. When I called Daniel there, he didn't seem like he was worried about, he knew that, he didn't even go out and try to work.
Daniel was out. Well, about two thirty, three thirty before, he was, he was, looks before. If we know it's coming.
Try to prepare, I guess, have a emergency preparedness.
And some people, when they empty their lawn mower bag or they empty it right in what, where the water's gonna flow. And that's where they.
That climbs it up.
That's where they put their limbs and everything and then when it washes it, it's just.
My son lived in the ditch, which is a low, low area.
Sees the beavers.
Yeah, and, but one time, I think a couple of years ago, we had a pretty big rain, over here just been. But his house is in a low area and his, his brother flooded that day. But his neighbors had bagged leaves for a month and said we're not gonna dig. And, uh, it was like a bane and it just backed it all up on him, you know, and.
Can that be a, a part of an, um, a part of an article in the paper as a warning or something like that? I mean, I don't, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to take the things out loud. Also, I see.
There's one thing we can do that might be banned, is at least they would show effort and at least they might.
That's what I'm saying, at least use a banned ad. So Roger, we're truly, we're committed to this. I would want the citizens to know that we are committed to trying to make the life, um, more conducive to having a better life.
I have young parents and. But I want to add two things and, and I'm trying to beat the horse to that today. But I do understand one hundred percent that you cannot say all this twenty twenty-five, we're gonna start. I mean, anybody that's ever had any construction or been around any construction, you know, it could be six or eight months because of weather, because of whatever. That's not what we're asking. We're just, you know, ballpark figure, okay? And the other thing that I would say, because this has been a problem since forty years or whatever. And nothing against you, Roger, whatsoever. When you run again or not, whenever the next election is, if you don't, here we are going back to another mayor and doing, you know, all this all over again. That's, that's the question.
That's kind of the reason that I was hoping, some of y'all, if you haven't already, would take an opportunity to try to email.
Oh, I know this.
It's, I know this problem's never been fixed, fixed, fixed.
Well, maybe the paper can put it out there there to everybody in the community to help. And send those emails, not just. It doesn't affect me immediately, but I understand and I can, I put myself in their shoes.
I wouldn't think you would take congressman off, I think they're used to getting them. And they got so many people under them answering their emails and letters, it don't really kind of bother them as much anyway, but I think it would be good.
If you are.
Just, it's just every damn thing they heard. Cause I, I'll give this, on this deal, I, I really, Roger and I had our talk about making sure we started contacting these congressmen and senators six, eight months ago, and, and since then, there's been several times people telling me, okay, Katie Britt sent somebody by here today, or I talked to so and so, and he didn't send them, or he didn't pack the information one time, I forgot what I was in, but I think he's followed up on this and I think he'll continue to, but I think we all know.
Adderhold's been contacted since twenty twenty. So, but I'm glad more of them.
I think once again, for me, don't stay to Roger, John, I know he's done some things, and they be a part of the, uh, paper to let you all know that he's doing his due diligence to get it done. So they give him credit for doing, and, and he's just, you all's man to know that he is doing those things. So I mean, that's how best, they give Roger a point, you know, and he'll make it to the community is, uh, is a need for that.
Well, I appreciate anything that I.
Your motion is adjourned.
I'll make my motion for adjourned.
Sure.